We have to call this committee, the whole meeting, to order on July 18th, 7:00 P. M. I'd like to recognize that we're on the traditional land of the Nishu way prenation and we are the homeland to make a call and approve with the agenda. Tom's to approve, all in favor?
Right.
Extra gold to come out, community comments and feedback? Any community comments or feedback tonight?
Yeah, so at the last meeting, there was a question from Mr. Madzak regarding a single part of his property. I drove by there and saw the location that we're discussing. It's linked to a previous excavation that took care, place of the property. And I directed the department to go fill that hole back in. So they should be attending to that either today or later this week.
Thank you. I came just before the meeting today and it hadn't been done yet.
Yeah, that's one of the same law, one of my property is pretty much done with the the adjoining property where it was a a length of excavation. His still isn't done, but maybe that's what's coming tomorrow or next day.
Any other community comments, feedbacks?
Yeah, it's also another place, the Southern Brown Yard on Oak Street. Quite a, it's right against the curve and it's real.
You don't have any of the address?
Uh, fifty-two.
Fifty-two?
I'm forty-eight. Right around there.
Any more community comments, feedback?
I have one question, if I may, about this, this feedback. It has been in the past practice for administration to provide us answers publicly. When they're addressed to council through this form. I'm wondering with Mr. Orbidor first comments and questions. I haven't seen an answer come back and one in particular was of interest to any people, I assume, being what would be happening with the land across the river. I'm wondering, have we not, did that get publicly released or are we still looking for answers? I will have to review those and see what's outstanding. So no, I have not put anything publicly on that. Can you confirm though that it is our policy when the questions are addressed here, the answers come through here as well? That's the practice that we've been following, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to go into reports. Five point one is the RCMP report.
Good evening, Mayor Smith, everyone. Over the stats, I do have on the monthly report, I didn't get to send it electronically, I was finishing it up late this afternoon if I can buy copies. And again, I'm still looking to get clearance to let them just keep copies, so. For the month of May, we had five reported sexual assaults compared to eleven for the same time last year. So that's seven down from the previous year. We had a hundred and twenty-seven reported assaults compared to a hundred and forty-three last year, that's forty-four in the difference for total year to date.
And that should be in there either, right?
Um, yeah, it should be. I have verified that. But that doesn't even happen mathematically, I think that's year to date, so that's May and May, so we're still up forty-four, I think, for the year. So, yes, if you look for twenty-twenty, the next following twenty-twenty-one. Domestic assault, we had eighteen reported this May, the twenty-one reported last May. That's three less year to date. We had the same amount of regular enters to residential and business as last year, so we're on par for that one. That's over, we have forty-six reported this year and in twenty-twenty-one, there were twenty-four reported. And years to date were up thirty-four reports of that. Public disorder, we had four hundred and fifty-seven reported May of twenty-twenty-two this year with four hundred and forty-seven reported last May. We are minus four fifty year to date over last year. Total drug files, we had seven this year with thirteen last year and we're down twenty-eight year to date. Other criminal code, we had a hundred and thirty-six compared to two hundred and seven last year, so we are, we have less mischiefs by a hundred and eighty-five year to date. Six robberies reported May of this year, two May of last year, so we are one more reported year to date for this year. We had no criminal code traffic for this year, one last year, so we are up nine from last year. Provincial traffic. We had one ninety as opposed to two oh three last year and we're up three hundred and ninety-four over last year. Collisions, there were none reported in May with nineteen last year, so we have twenty-four less collisions reported this year. I'm going to check on the homicide stats because the accounting, mind you, that's for this month, but we have, there was, we have a total of four this year, so. Missing persons request to locate, we had a hundred and twenty-nine reported last year, a hundred and thirty-three last year, so we are up by a hundred and fourteen year to date this year. So I wanted to have discussions with the mayor and council regarding the APP. So this is regarding last year's APP year to date, but I'm working on Atlantic consults. But I don't know if now is an appropriate time or maybe some other time, but anyway, I'll go on to our our monthly report that I put together, the proactive report, our activities. June was a very busy month for our PCR. They participated, both Constable Diver and Special Constable Cleveland participated in the law enforcement porch run on June the tenth. On June the eleventh, they participated in the Relay for Life as well as the Pride North Parade. On the thirteenth, there is the Blackman Life Scale, Constable Diver held a Bravo event participants, which included a police vehicle to explore and one to decorate with their own earth, so there's, and included a photo of the children's article vehicle, which was washable, so. The Boys and Girls Club, there was no after-school program because the boys and girls went virtual. National Indigenous Day, Constable Diver and Special Constable Cleveland participated in activities of a playing part with Special Constable Cleveland wearing his red serge. And Constable Diver wore their dealer uniform for the event. There was participation on June twenty-second in the Junior High Health Fair. Constable Diver held this activity for all grade seven and eight students in the school district of history lake. That's where she offered the mock pair, which is physical abilities for permanent examination for RCMP to go to DPO. They got to work on that and they also were allowed to don the goggles which simulate the effects of impairment. So I got to try it on, they don't for quite effective, so I think that was interesting for the kids. In addition, there were several parades that the RCMP were involved in, the mad parade on June eighteenth. MKO anti-racism awareness walk on June twentieth. The Artie Parker grab on June twenty-second and then the place parade. And addition to that, there were other activities on June twenty-first, Superintendent Mitchell and Staff Sergeant Shane Flanagan attended the sunrise ceremony held at the city of Thompson on June fourth, participated in the kidneys north touch and trap. It was World Elder of Youth Awareness Day presentation on June fifteenth. Yeah, Special Constable Cleveland attended the Artie Parker graduation ceremony at the TRCC on June twenty-ninth. There were various dates where our PCR members participated in lunches on the lawn. They held a taxi school, there was a pack of pancake breakfast at the Wofford School. Welcome to kindergarten at Mertwood and Riverside Schools and we participated in the count at the moment, we took friendship center on June twenty-ninth. Our July activities are Canada Day and we're conducting downtown patrols and water dispersment homeless population in partnership with MKO. And I think we, Rob said, we distributed eighty-five cases of water already this year, so. For stakeholder engagement, we participated in the pit count and the Thompson Aboriginal Board meetings. Or the Mental Health Act, we had eighty-four calls per service with sixty-point-five hours spent at Thompson General Hospital. I included, finally got the May costs at thirteen thirty-three and ninety cents and June was nineteen eleven and forty-six cents. So just for awareness sake too, if a member waits to claim their overtime, sometimes there's delays, so that will show up on the next month or whichever month they actually received the pay. So that may not be accurate to the month itself, they're going to give us year-to-date totals so that we can keep track of it, so that we can give you updates. So the annual performance plan, I think I gave that last month, there are divisional priorities set, so if we wanted to discuss which sort of initiatives within those that the mayor and council will like to have us perform, we can add those in and then I can give you stats, we can even go back, started collecting some data, so. We didn't have too many news releases in the month of May and the detachment has got brought it on last time with the destruction of exhibits. We're able to perform a burn this year at the at the disposal of waste disposal location, so we greatly appreciate the efforts and helping to spend that money. And I wanted to bring up that with the courts returning to legal service and a two-year backlog for cases due to the pandemic, notable strain has increased on the already critical staff of municipal employees at our detachment. Three that we have are doing their best, but they're very much overwhelmed with work, so we may need to consider some options to reduce their workload. We've already cut hours for the front counter. So I just wanted to highlight that because we haven't heard anything regarding any more police, so. That's all I have for my presentation.
You did comment to me about with the court system, that one day alone that they had given you.
We received on one day fifty warrants, so amongst three MEs, including counter service and other documentation, and those are critical to get on our lease system because if somebody is, as a warrant standing, we need to know so they can be arrested, so those are some operational impacts that we're starting to feel.
Thank you. I've got a concern elsewhere.
Madam Mayor, good evening, Jenny. I got a question, then I want to make some comments. The question is, maybe I didn't read it or I didn't hear it, but how many homicides have we had in Thompson year to date?
We've had, like, it wouldn't be reported in that because we had one in the month of July, but we've had four.
Okay, thank you. I just want to reflect very quickly, Mayor Smook, on June the fifteenth. I attend a meeting at the Chamber of Commerce and at that meeting, Staff Sergeant Shane Flanagan made a presentation. And I was very disturbed in some of the statistics I seen and heard that day. For example, violent crime was up forty-five percent in Thompson from last five-year average. That's significant. Metlal, two hundred and twenty-two hours in four months. I've always talked about understanding the city in regards to where the big issues was. Staff Sergeant Flanagan had no problem identifying where the big issues was in our city. And I think that's where we need to be focusing more on, and that's certainly in the Eastwood area. There was also another one that really bothered me and I wasn't sure of the answer when you had time to talk, but a hundred and fifty-six percent increase in vehicle damage. I'm not sure what that meant as well. But what I do believe is that even though there are some figures within the report, some might be a minus, some a plus. The crime has not gotten less than Thompson, it's gotten worse and it's getting worse. And I believe that we need to meet with the police more often than we do and make sure that we're all on the same page, given proper direction where it's need to be taken. And certainly listening to what they have to say in regards to how we can make improvements ourselves as the city mayor and council. So these are some of the comments, I'm not looking for a response, if there's one, that's fine. But I believe that during this summer, during these fires that we're having, we're going to even see it a lot worse than we have in the past. Thank you, Jenny, and all the best in the future. Bye.
You're on mute, counselor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Jenny, for the report. Two items here is pretty the number is kind of like, I'm wondering what is that reflective? Number one is a public disorder is a four hundred and fifty cases below than average last year. So is it because of, when you look at the previous year, it seems like a significant dropping, is it is there something that you guys did or something that the public, whatever, like, can you give us a little bit of a explanation for that particular?
Public disorder, I'm going to have to look into that further because I do know it is quite a significant number. I think also that I know we also include the CSO, this recently came up on to to be, to be working on the, on the road, so I'm not sure if that might have a significant impact in the, in the public disorder files because we create files based on their lodging of individuals. And I think they came up to speed in June, around June, so the numbers wouldn't reflect or, yeah.
So, okay, the second item is the curfew check. And I look at the May, you have zero checks, so does that mean there's a less cases to be, to be follow-up or is that because of lack of resources?
So as I kind of stated, that's why I didn't go into those stats is because we, I wanted to consult with mayor and council on what we want for annual performance plan initiatives. So we haven't been tracking the old ones, but we can certainly backdate and give you updates on each quarter. Once we've had meaningful discussions on what the the community leaders would like to have as initiative, so that's why those numbers are reflected, it's being done as a general rule, I just like I said, I want to update the APP with consultations with you folks before because those may change, they may not. And if they don't, then we can go back and get those stats and update it so that it accurately reflects what's been done. And we had talked the other day about having this meeting before the, yes, end of the month, so we'll be putting that out to you this week, but that's sometime to see when people are available.
Hey, was that it, Tom?
Yes, thank you, Jenny, and good luck, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Staff Sergeant, for the report. I do believe that community involvement stuff, investments, it takes time to pay off. That said, I'm looking at the divisional fires and assume that's key division things that I want to think. And while I don't disagree with any, I really disagree with the priority set there. Putting crime prevention, crime reduction, community safety as the lowest of those five priorities, I assume they're ranked as.
No, there's no ranking, they're, they're all equally important, they're just, there's five that are.
I'm looking at it. The other thing, the city of Thompson has, and I hope you would agree, significant investment in addressing this public safety issue that we've had on our backs for years, the development of the community safety plan, working with different people. Trying to avoid the saddles as well as working with the RCMP to the extent that we have and continuing to put effort, money and investment into the Community Safety Officer Program. The city of Thompson needs to know that these investments, in my opinion, the city of Thompson needs to know those investments pay off. And so, looking at the statistics, I think what I'm seeing here might be a little bit different than what I've heard from other people. But I really want to see that, but I think the city of Thompson needs to see that going forward, no matter who's on council, we need to know that those investments are paying off or not. So if they're not, then we can switch, and I think I brought this up with you before, so it's very important to you that whatever we do works. So I would hope you keep that in mind for when we talk about these in more detail. I also have another question, but I'll leave it until other people have a chance to comment.
And right now, you're you're in, I have no more to answer right now. Can I respond to your question? So I'm thinking that you're referring to the CSO program and whatnot, so we're actually, as part of it, we are collecting their stats as well, so that we can let you know how that's impacting our numbers. And with myself being on the Community Wellness and Public Safety Rising Committee and sort of on the Public Safety Subcommittee with, with Anthony, we do have some plans for, even this week, we're meeting with one of the cities, with one of the city's facilities to do kind of a accepted approach on that building, so I don't want to give too much away until we get to meet, but we actually enjoy being on that committee, I think the proactive approach is what's needed, and so I'm going to start that on, unfortunately, we had an emergency call for rural, so I was going to introduce Sergeant Lake to be taking my seat at the end of the month. But he was unable to make it, so I apologize for that, maybe for the next meeting, if we get to meet before the twenty-ninth of July, we can discuss the APP again, the priorities that you want, and I can keep you standing with that.
So you do no longer be with us?
I am retired.
You're allowed to do.
I think so.
I did have a retirement question.
Is there any other, Constance McMyrtle?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't have any questions for Staff Sergeant Blantzen's report, but I did want to say thanks for her service and congrats on retirement, if I did hear that she is, is leaving us, it will be, sorry to see her go, but thanks for her service, thanks.
Seeing no other question?
Counselor, I'll give you the seconds. So this is going to put you on the spot a little bit, and I apologize for that, but since you're leaving anyways. But I actually wish you all the rest of your retirement. Hopefully, you find something that you like, meeting in your retirement, you have a long and prosperous time after meeting Thompson, I assume. We have lots of houses for sale, though. As counselors, we all have certain groups of people that we speak to in circles, just like everybody else. In my circles, they tend to be more on the conservative side. I would be remiss for me, even though it's not within our jurisdiction, not to mention what happened in Nova Scotia. And that a number of the people that are in my circle have problems with the RCMP's involvement in the I wouldn't say scandal, but the use of that incident to push gun control, it's been at least portrayed in the so I'm, I'm just want to raise that as a concern as counselor who represents people, I didn't appreciate this Loki's allowance of that type of interference from government and I'll be at that and to not leave a good note, I really appreciate the breadth of pressure that you brought to Thompson. I hope that the next person that comes here is, is open-minded and it's good in terms of communications. Thank you, thank you for listening.
Well, thank you for joining us, so we appreciate it and we'll get that meeting going for the weekend. Oh, yeah. She needs her favorite platform.
I'm, I'm working on. We'll finish her, they will get a big. But yes, that I can, I just want to make anyone in my organization, but the view is that ultimately you'll get to have these newsletters.
And I do think that's a great initiative, you know, showing some of the positives that our members have done and the thousand calls that they have for service there, one point there.
Yes.
Do not get that information out publicly, like, it's such good, like, why?
And I, and I would like to, but I mean, I just want to make sure that there's nothing that I'm putting in there that would some, if there's somebody's, like, we do have pictures and they've signed a model, people forms that we can use their photo, so we covered that, but I just want to make sure that there's nothing, perhaps the data related to Mental Health Act can't be shared or you know what I mean, there's just certain aspects, I want to make sure it's all covered off so that there's no question, and when you get the stats, you can get the newsletters.
I think you probably agree that most PC agencies have difficulty right now. Certainly from my perspective, they do in terms of their public perception. These are things that move along, exchanging that.
And I think that we don't really, it's not, we don't showcase the good work that our members do on a regular basis, and I feel that does them a disservice, so that's why I wanted to bring that to, to everyone's attention, because I know, like, Staff Sergeant, or sorry, Special Constable Cleveland and Constable Diver are tireless and work endlessly on sometimes voluntarily after hours to participate in the community and they deserve the recognition for what I was doing myself.
Thank you very much.
That's a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on. Five point two is Development and Technical Service Department report. Going to Mr. Charles.
Yes, good evening, Mary Council. My monthly report is attached. Just some highlights for information, our ISO projects are gearing up for work. Water contractor was scheduled to be on site this week to start water work. However, I am hearing, I think it was last week, that they're going to be delayed slightly, I'm trying to revise schedule. I've not received one out of it yet, and I'm trying to also figure out rationale as to why they're delayed. And as soon as I get that information, I will share it with council. Again, the way to put the water is Beaverton, Jupiter, do a drive from the west side of Beaver all the way to the Tarboo and Jupiter from Oak Street to Sucker. And we are still, as far as I know, I have been told that they are still committed to get the work done by the middle of October deadline. That's the water, roads. Since our last report, the engineering company, E-Com, has come to town, done a geotechnical assessment on the two thousand and twenty-two road groups. However, they, their assessments has led to further engineering of fire. If you recall from previous meetings, we had looked at doing a milling fill profile, repair approach. I, if you recall from previous meetings, we had looked at doing a milling fill profile, uh prepared approach for these roads. Uh, a number of the roads, unfortunately, are too far gone for milling fill. So what is being performed by the engineer is a is a uh process known as rotor mill. So if you look at it, kind of comparative, uh a milling fill, they would uh they would take off uh twenty-five to thirty mill of the road, millimeters of the road that pavement, leaving a a base below it. And then lay down a lift, a new lift on top. Watermill actually have to take off about a hundred millimeter of the entirety of the pavement that's there. Crush it, put it back in the place, compact it as the base, and then lay a new one hundred mil in multiple lifts, layer of pavement on top of it. So because of this, additional engineering work was required for all but two of the roads. Uh, there were two here that are still no fill candidates. Uh, so again, uh rotor mill for the majority of the work and milling fill for two. I do actually have, as of three thirty today, the final tender documents, uh tender document in my emails review. The goal is to have that turned around and out by the end of this week for bidding with bids closing in early August and the contractor uh hopefully uh named by the end of August to start the paving work in September, uh which I've been told is consistent with other uh years. We do the paving work kind of uh late August, September. Uh, with the number of days remaining for for the construction season, uh it is highly unlikely that not all the roadwork will get done this year. So they're waiting to carry over to the spring of twenty-three. Uh, again, the engineering consult sees this as a as a bit of a win in that uh that will allow whoever's doing that carryover work to uh look at the twenty-three work package and potentially provide some more uh attractive pricing. So again, the road packages are still on par with three point five five kilometers for road and the water distance as well. One of the questions that you have previously is communication. Uh, so there have been preconstruction notices for water circulated to residents in the Deerwood area. Uh, there has also been a uh a dedicated uh I C I P website that Jasper has set up on the city of Thompson website. So if you're on the homepage, there's actually a little button there that says uh I C I P code twenty-two that provides all the information on the both the water and the road packages for this year. That's an update, uh just from general other perspective, uh the uh facilities. Uh, there was a R F P that went out for the public safety building to conduct a building walkover assessment. Uh, these bids closed in uh early June. Uh, and uh even after how numerous uh engineering firms come forward with questions, uh there were no bids received. Uh, I am working to try and understand as to why there were no bids received with the hope that we can get this work pre-tendered and successfully done this year. And then finally, there's the update on developments. Uh, we issued twelve construction permits in the month of June, with a total construction value of just shy of six million dollars. And year to date, we've got twenty-eight permits out of issue with a total construction value of just over twelve and a half million dollars. And then secondary pages, the city of Thompson golden permit comparative table, uh comparing June twenty-two to June of twenty-one and twenty, as well as year-to-date dollars, again, just for information. That is my report.
I'm here. I am uh concerned and want to know why we didn't uh tender up all of the I C O grant for specific works, all this one package. I I assume if I'm not say I misunderstood you, we're doing it year by year, correct?
Yeah.
Why? Why would we not do that? All in one package altogether?
Uh, a lot of it had to do with pricing of of materials and of uh there's a big risk to pricing uh through the multi-year tender with the volatility of price of construction materials. Like for water, as an example, and then the fuel for the ash well. And in consultation with their consultants, I was felt that doing a a annual tackle would would provide less risk to the city of Thompson uh inflated pricing by contractors to protect themselves, given the volatile market.
All I have. Yeah, and I'll just say, further to that, I also followed up with the province and highways and asked for their advice on that as well. They concurred with the same advice. And it should be divided up uh year by year. Or so my follow-up would be, there's also risks in city of Thompson by having it broken up as well. Um, in my opinion, we we would be premium for every additional time we do it, there's extra work involved because you're putting this whole work together every time as well as running to the procurement exercise and the awarding every time. I'm I'm I understand there's risks on the side of this, but the the one saving grace for the city of Thompson was that you could annualize the inflation over time or escalation maybe um to be able to come up a little bit ahead years. That might give, I assume that to factor in. Yep, so the that's the balance that the department had to work on was which is the best way to go based on all the advice that was given, was selected that the best way to do was the year by year. Thank you.
Constance, bro.
Um, we were talking previously about uh maybe moving some priority of roads around. Did we still do that? I think it was one that got brought up.
Yeah, so I can't say that Red Wall has been added to the to the list. At this point in time, I can't see which year it's going to be due. Uh, when uh when the cop uh does their expense from that area, we'll determine what year that's going to along with the again, we're trying to do the prior year rules first, but also kind of flatline the spending over all the years. So we're not going to be wondering if they hit on here to do a pile of roads and then and then a little bit of air. Uh, right now, Thompson Drive is going to be looking like the next year's work package. Uh, so Red Wall could be as soon as on three. I don't know that. That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Thanks for adding.
Thank you. Uh, Constance McMyrtle?
Oh, yeah, thanks, Mayor Spook. It's so, um, I I guess from understanding, it's forty days of work that starts the beginning of September, and that will keep us on track for what we wanted for three and a half kilometers of road paved this year. Um, I guess my first question. Since we're keeping on schedule by making some changes, does this set us up in successive years for time loss and cost increases as we have to address more of the the rotor mill work?
So just to confirm, we've got, we'll have a little forty construction days left this year. Uh, the engineering consultant believes that the work package with additional rotor mill work is probably somewhere around uh sixty-five to seventy workdays, so they will not get it all done this year. That will be the carryover to next spring. Um, as for the uh cost increases in the future, again, we take that as a year-on-year time as they do the technical evaluations. If every road in Thompson is the same as what they've seen, then yes, we're going to have a lot more rotor mill work than uh milling fill. Uh, but again, listening to the cost estimator from the engineering consultant, they feel that we have enough buffer in our I C O brands to be able to cover those scope changes.
Okay, thanks for that. And if I could um ask uh one more question through the chair. Um, would it be beneficial for the city of Thompson to to get our tenders out earlier than the the third week of July, considering the multi-year and the scope of the project? To to avoid that kind of rush in September, risks of frost and and that sort of thing?
That is the goal. Uh, again, this year was, you know, I'm just giving the uh the late engineering contract tender goal and then the additional geotechnical work. Um, A E com does plan to have the tender work from summer of twenty twenty-three project. Out either late this year or very early in the new year.
Okay, well, that's uh that's encouraging to hear. Thanks. Thanks, Lyle. That's it.
Maybe explain, Lyle, about the the income contract, if that is for the private year.
Yeah, A E com's engineering contract is for the length of the project. So um for the roadwork, uh, we tendered out the entire engineering service contract for all of the roadwork uh project. So they will be the engineering consultant for all of the design work for the roads. For water, um, again, if you recall, Matt Water Services, water is meaning the water work. They are the the kind of project that are for that work. They have issued the contract to Stantec for the detailed design for the work that will be conducted in, well, this year, but the summer of twenty-three and the summer of twenty-four. Uh, and then the the high-level design work for the remainder of the years. Once we get to the end of twenty-four, there will be another contract left for the detailed design for the remaining years of the water project. And again, that is the way that Matt Water Services work traditionally conducts those types of engineering studies or that kind of engineering work.
Thank you. Uh, Constance Valtino.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Smoak. My audio is terrible tonight. I I it's very um in and out, so I apologize if I'm asking something that was already said. Uh, thank you for the report. My comment is towards the communication with the residents. Uh, you may have touched on this, but uh if we're going to have a designated uh part of our website for I C O projects, I don't think that identifying it as I C O projects is what our homeowners know it as. They know it as the roadwork and they know it as the water work. So the, I'm just wondering if we can simplify it and not call it the link for I C O projects, because probably people don't know what that is. And the other thing for me is the comment about the high dollar in permits um is very encouraging that the construction value is well over the twelve million mark for this year is is a very good news story for me. So thanks for the update, Lyle.
Thank you. And we can, uh, I'll talk with Casper, we'll potentially be naming that uh that link to something that's uh that's more understood.
I guess my question is, we've got the link on the computers. We have a lot of people that aren't computer literate, are not on the computers, have we got it down pat as to how we're going to modify them?
Absolutely. So there uh between Friday and today, preconstruction printed off preconstruction notices were hand-delivered to all of the residents uh in the Deerwood area that's impacted by water. Uh, once we get into the roadwork and then into the Juniper for water, that those similar notices tailored to that work will be delivered to residents of that area. So uh, we're kind of trying to get more forward with the partners.
Much appreciated. Thank you. Any other comments?
I'll just, I will be using our radio. Yeah, the opportunity, but that's just on the radio whenever needed.
Okay, thank you. Constance Wong.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, the question is, uh, when they say the the because of the uh the poor condition of the road. So for the changes, what does that mean? Does that mean that uh you're going to cost us more? If it costs us more, what is that more means? Like, the dollar sign I'm talking about. So are we going to be able to complete the whole project with the budgeted for the forty million dollars? Are we going to be short? Or are we going to be uh scaled down some of the uh the road just to uh just to match the uh the money? So can someone explain that part for me? Thanks.
Yeah, so uh again, with with the conversation with A E com, with the new engineer there, uh, they are confident that the brand money that we received, the forty million dollars will cover the twenty kilometers of road we have we have equipped for. In fact, we're up to uh we're up to twenty-one point six now adding Red Wall. So um we will be able to calibrate that, uh, Councilor Wong, once we get the first tender package in in August. It'll have an idea of cost per kilometer and we'll have a better idea at that point uh whether or not we're that or not. Uh, but again, the engineering consultants, and these guys have done this for a long, long time, uh are confident, their actual words to me were, we could probably do full reconstruction on all twenty kilometers and still have enough money to cover. So if you recall, full reconstruction is what they gave in front of um subway, then Thompson Drive, they were completely dug up, not only the pavement, but the entire base, and we laid the base and pavement on top. So we'll be in a better position to answer once we get the first package tender presented now.
Okay, time to see. Thank you.
Any further comments? For the first date and uh it's going to be a busy summer for everybody concerned. Look forward to the update when you find out both the water work. Next, we're going to go to five point three. Public Safety Department report.
So councils have received a report from the director. Overview is provided with the community safety from some of the changes that have happened in the funding. There's an overview of the ship program, a number of the statistics from the community safety officer program, and then some of the discussions on what the next steps are and the involvement with the uh community wellness and public safety. Um, if there's any comments or questions, I can bring those back to the director and have those answered for council for next meeting. I'm just wondering why the director isn't here today. So the director had already booked vacation uh a month ago, so just the timing of when this showed up on the agenda. That was another reason I didn't want, I prefer to have the person who's making the book in in person. Um, can we have her back at a later time once we've had a chance to read this?
Okay, I didn't see the order the hands went up, so I'm just going to start left to right. Uh, Constance McMyrtle?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mayor Spook. Um, I I won't pose any direct questions without uh the director here. I just uh for for public information, um, just wanted to note the from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one, we do have the numbers for intoxicated persons detained in Thompson and using a population of thirteen thousand five hundred. We have anywhere from thirteen to twenty percent of our population being detained under that that protocol, which I mean is uh concerning for public safety, for expenses, for liability and a number of reasons. So I just wanted to to highlight that. And uh for myself to to note again that I think if we can do more to intervene in the consumption of public alcohol or public consumption of alcohol, maybe we can benefit on the back end with some of these numbers. Um, Saturday certainly was one day that I was at Canadian Tire and McDonald's for an ice cream cone, and there was very little effort being made to conceal the consumption of alcohol in our streets. Thanks.
Thank you. Constance Wong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I've seen this report a couple of times already from the same person, but I I do need to know when the reports frame it such a way to talk about the problem. And uh I still need to know what, so if we can break it down, what would it cost us for doing that kind of work? Because uh based on the report, one part of the report say because we have some funding for the uh the ship program and because it's no longer funding. So what does that mean to compare to the number that of the cases that happened in Thompson? So if we can break it down, can we go forward with the number of the breakdown and 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 work with the number? Otherwise, it it doesn't give me a lot of info by 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 looking at that. When you say the shot of staff and because of the C S O and all that, what does that mean altogether? So I I hope that report, or maybe not just a report, like even when we have a chance to have a meeting. So that kind of number that I would prefer to see it, so at least I can use the number to to make that kind of decision rather than just the number. And when you say the lack of staff or short of staff or lack of our C S O, what does that mean due to the number? But we still see a lot of uh number happening in Thompson is kind of bad right now. So anyway, uh uh hopefully there will be a better uh better way of uh dealing with the issue rather than just a report. And, okay, thank you for now.
Thank you. Constance Ralston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll first um refer to Council McMyrtle when he made the comment about the alcohol downtown not not really being concealed. He's absolutely right. I've been down there a number of times before I came on vacation. Almost every day I would go down and look around and the the alcohol is the the alcohol is very much exposed in our community. And when you think of the number of police officers, CSOs, boil-off officers, and the list goes on, we add, you would think that that people would think that we shouldn't be hiding this or doing something, but there's there seems to be no fear whatsoever, and the number seems to be larger. My question really is, I've been checking every day for the last month plus, and I've asked the questions to yourself and others, when is this sobering center really going to open up? I've gone up there and I've checked, there's days I'll see people working around there, there's other days I don't see nothing. For the public record, can we have a date when this is going to actually happen?
Yeah, I don't have a specific date yet. We are meeting with contractors there tomorrow. So I believe about eighty to ninety percent of the work that's required is done. And I think there's still a fence that has to be put out that council last week at the at the meeting. So there's meetings that are happening tomorrow. We're walking through with the police and others, but it is very close to going.
Anything else?
I'll leave it at that now because I could go on. I've been very quiet then. I'm tired from being on the boat all day.
Hardships, hardships. Counselor McMurdo, do you have your hand up again?
Yeah, that's correct. I just follow up. If Anthony said that they're getting close and they're doing walks, there's I wondered if if it would be possible if council could get an invitation for one at at some point in the future for a walk-through. Thanks.
Yeah, we can arrange for that.
Thank you. We just have to work around everybody's hold of this. Counselor Ellsworth, do you have your hand up again?
Yeah, I do, because I really want to really emphasize the fact that if we're asking administration to set up a time for a tour, people need to come. And and we did have a tour back some time ago with very few people that came from our council. So absolutely, I agree that we should have a tour and have looks, see what work has been done and accommodations is going to be made. But I don't want to waste anyone's time if people are not going to show up. Thank you.
Thank you. I do agree. All right. Anything else for that topic? Five point four is the mayor's The following is the mayor's report from June twenty-first to July eighteen twenty-two. Along with Deputy Counselor Ellsworth, we attended the opening ceremonies for National Indigenous People's Day. And Counselor Ellsworth, I attended the community foundation foundation tech presentation to the city of Thompson on June twenty-third for our record board. Along with Counselor Ellsworth, we had a visit from Red Four Class of Berkwood School. And Counselor Ellsworth Wong and I attended a Nickel Days president's reception on June twenty-second. Along with city manager Anthony McGinnis, we had a virtual meeting with Walmart Thompson manager and head office on June twenty-third. A Thompson Community Development Corporation AGM took place on June twenty-eighth. Along with city manager Anthony McGinnis, we attended Thompson North Forge North Fab Lab grand opening with Minister Cullen and Counselor Wong and I attended the Artic Parker Legion graduation late on June twenty-ninth. Along with city manager Anthony McGinnis, we attended a breakfast meeting with Minister Reyes and his colleagues, Counselor Wong and I, as well. The city manager Anthony McGinnis attended the Immigration Advisory Council public meeting, and I had the opportunity to attend the UCN graduation on June thirtieth. I attended a broad greetings at the Canada Day celebration, and many of my fellow counselors were also. Along with city manager Anthony McGinnis, we met MKO, and I met with jurisdiction on July twelfth concerning some of publications. And that is it for my mayor's report today. Thank you. Next, we're going to go into lunch later. Six point one is a letter from Karen Melnichak, Executive Director of Multi-Material Stewardship Manitoba in regards to the twenty twenty-one annual report. Anthony, if you want to know.
Yeah, this is just for information for council. It's the annual report from MMSM, which is the multi-material stewardship of Manitoba. It's really speaking towards recycling the different materials that we use. It's their annual report. I believe they sent us a hard copy, but if any members of council want to take or review, as well as you could review the annual report on their website. In their letter, they just give some highlights from twenty twenty-one that they have recovery rates of seventeen percent for materials. Hundred and fifty-one communities are participating in MMSM programs, and that MMSM is paid million dollars to participate in communities.
Thank you. And for further information, Andrew English has that hard copy of the report. Anybody wants it, they can take that with her. Any comments or questions on this report?
Counselor Paul. Yeah, I understand that the Thompson Recycling Center is currently looking for people. I wish them the best of luck finding someone. And again, like to point out Billy Joe's good work there. Thanks.
Thank you. A letter from Andrew Forward, General Manager. A initiative compelling no forestry management corporation. I tried all afternoon to get that right, but it didn't work. In regards to the twenty-year forest plan.
Yeah, this is just an update letter that they've sent out to all communities in the region, just giving you an update on their activities. So it's really there for information for council. The council has some actions that they'd like us to take. We could do so.
Any comments concerning council? Seeing that, we're going to move on to Counselor Fountain. You have a recognition you would like to pass on?
No, Madam Mayor, actually, I'm proposing that the that council as a whole do what we've done, same with Brett Thompson in the past and Billy Joe Thompson in the past. And recognizing Mr. Koharski's contributions to our city. As you know, both you and I have talked about his contributions with respect to garbage pickup, which are constant. I understand there's other people doing that in the city, but I think this individual stands out significantly above others in terms of the work that he's done to try and keep the community and the surrounding areas tidy and beautiful. So I'm I'm asking my fellow counselors and Madam Mary as well to support providing some recognition for him here in council at a later date. My understanding is the process to do that is to come through this committee to get the will of council and go forward from that.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any comments? Anthony, before I called the council.
Nope.
Counselor McMurdo, your comment?
Yeah, I'd be a hundred percent in agreement. As Counselor Fulton said, there are other people that contribute, but I but I think Mr. Koharski really really does does a lot and sets a fine example for this community. And I I had the privilege of working with them before. That's that's what he brought there. So I I would be in favor of recognizing him, certainly.
Thank you. I definitely have no problems recognizing Mr. Koharski and Hunter. Also, I did pick up forty some bags from a lady and her four-year-old daughter that picked up. So I think we should maybe take a look at a few of the people this summer that they do a lot, and maybe we'll make a a couple of them recognize. But I definitely for sure I can agree with you for Darcy. I think maybe even Casper has some names and been cleaning up around some of the lakes here, which is very good to get our waterways cleaned up. So thank you, and that will definitely.
Sure.
Okay. And we'll call for German. Counselor Pro, Counselor Ellsworth. All agree with.
Thank, thank you.
Everybody that are on holidays.
Yes, have a nice night, everyone. Bye.
All right.